Remember, you should have created the second twenty-five study deck medication. Well, we can continue from where we left off on Friday. But we did a lot last Friday, especially with drug to drug, drug to food, drug to disease interaction. So today's a continuation. My estimate is we're gonna do four weeks of medication before we jump to patient safety. Okay, and I'm really targeting to finish in ninety days, so you can take the test in ninety days. Cause once you go and you go to a hospital, you saw what happened to Jessica. Like, when are you gonna take the test? When are you gonna take the test? When are you gonna take the test? I don't want you to have to worry about that. You're prepared, right? So anytime they tell you when you're gonna take the test, ah, I'm actually scheduled already, right? Okay, cause that's what happens when you exit the hospital and they do happen. Okay, so I don't want you to have to worry about what now you're ready or not you're ready, okay? Come on in. We do have a board exam review every Wednesday and Fridays.
Wow!
So both morning and night are here. Twenty-five decks. Give me a drug, or give me something that wasn't clear to you, or let's talk about something that has a drug to drug, drug to food, drug to disease interaction, and it can be a group of drugs, okay? It can be a pharmacological class or a therapeutic class. And then we'll discuss the drug to drug, drug to food, and drug to disease interaction. I hope you're taking notes. I hope you have your own notebook. Kriya's notebook is still here. They should not come. No, no, it's still here. Remember, this is not a lecture. This is a review class, so you have to bring to me those topics because lectures happen in your perspective. Though I do understand some of you have done those classes and will be down, and this is why those are the topics that we're gonna clarify or emphasize or highlight on. Kathy.
Um, the name is Black Canil.
What is it?
Black Canil.
Black Canil?
Black Canil, and then the next called Hydroxychloroquine.
Black Canil.
But this one's an anti-malaria agent, like antirheumatic. And I'm like, I thought it was antibiotic because of the queen.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So I was all like, okay.
Is there an E?
Yeah.
Did I spell it right? Black Canil is a brand name. The generic is Hydrochloroquine. Hydrochloroquine is for malaria, right? What is malaria? Where'd you get it from?
Mosquito.
Mosquito. Kathy's like, second, I'm second guessing how we pronounce words now because of getting mosquitoes. Yeah, Anaphylis mosquitoes. So malaria, we get it from mosquitoes. It's not because it ends in a quin. It's an antibiotic. What do you think Kathy was talking about? Antibiotics that end in quin. Nothing. Yeah, quinolones, I think she is what she's talking about. Okay, let's talk about quinolones, but know that this is a good topic, okay? Quinolones is a group of antibiotics, okay? What are we looking for? Quinolones or fluor- this has fluoride, right? Fluoroquinolones. This is a group of antibiotics, right? What's the root for quinolones?
Olon.
Hmm?
O-l-o-n-e.
Oxacin. What's for fluoroquinolones or quinolones? Phloxacin. Do you remember this?
I remember.
Good topic. She was confused with a quinolone group, okay? So hydroxy, but good guess, not the right guess.
Or on.
Very important, okay? So there's a group of antibiotics called quinolones or fluoroquinolones, to be specific. They have in their root what you call oxacin, right? Or phloxacin. Now pull up your top two hundred drugs book. Find them as oxacin or phloxacin. I know Cody doesn't have that, but I'll show you the drugs book. Yeah, you do have. When I visited, I gave it to you, but Cody's knows how he doesn't have. So I'm waiting on a complete code again, so that I can give that top two hundred drugs book to you guys for free.
I don't think it's here.
It's not there, then it's something that you need to add. This is that book Cody that I gave. So. It's not there, which means you should take note of it, right? Oxacin and phloxacin. Right? Levofloxacin, example. So give me examples of quinolones now or fluoroquinolones. Levofloxacin. So if you are, huh? Moxifloxacin. You hear it? So it's a phloxacin and oxacin. Once you hear that this are quinolones, and what are quinolones for? A kind of infection. Of course bacteria, because it's an antibiotic. But what, what specific diseases or infections? Do we use quinolones for? That's why she was confused. There's a queue. But this one's for malaria.
Utias?
Urinary tract infection. Correct. It's used for urinary tract infection. Anything else?
Pneumonia.
Pneumonia. It's also used for pneumonia. So let me ask you this. Will we use this for pregnant women?
No.
No, it's one of those you cannot use on pregnant women, okay? Another thing, since Kathy started a quinolone, since she was confused with a queen, okay? They're not the same. Let me tell you another one. Statin. Nothing confusing. What are statins? High cholesterol, correct. I think I mentioned this last week. Statin, example, simvastatin, torvastatin, right? They are for cholesterol. Right? To control your elevated cholesterol levels. What's another term for statin?
HMG coenzyte.
Coenzym A reductase. Okay, correct. So once you see statin or HMG coenzyme A reductase inhibitor, it is for cholesterol. I talked about this. Now I remember. The antilepidemic, antilepemic, anti-hyperlipidemic, all one in the same, okay? Remember how the amine statin, simvastatin, torvastatin, right? There's a drug called ni-statin. Is it a statin?
No.
Is it for cholesterol? What is this for? That's the trap that happened to Kathy. Okay, take note. Not a statin. Good start. Very, very good. Next. Okay, next drug or next group of drugs or class that you wanna discuss that you've encountered on your twenty-five? When you made your first batch of twenty-five, when you created your second, was it different from the first? Or there were some that gets added?
No, second.
It's random, right? It pulls randomly? Okay, Kathy, again.
What is this to know about when it comes to medication? Semi-generation, first generation.
Yes. Okay, so we have how many generation antibiotics? Are you talking about antibiotics?
Uh, well, some drugs have like with something.
Gataipin.
Gataipin. It's the second generation, I think they call it.
Okay, you don't have to know that.
No.
You don't have to know that, but antibiotics come in different generations. Antibiotics, yes. Yeah, so tell me, how many generations are there in an antibiotic? It just sounds like first generation is old. Yeah, so when you hear first generation antibiotics, this are your first antibiotics that were discovered or were being used. Second generation is the next group, third and fourth, okay?
Our generation.
There are five generations of antibiotics. You know, when I was in pharmacy school, there were only four. So that means there's other bacteria that came about and other infections that came about, and we have to make our antibiotics stronger, okay? So the higher the generation, the newer the antibiotic, the higher the generation, the stronger the antibiotic, okay? And here's reality. So when you go to a doctor, because we abuse, not just as a nation, worldwide amoxicillin all over the world, okay? Some countries, you can get amoxicillin without a prescription. Many countries, Latin American countries, Asian countries. And antibiotics is something that should have what auxiliary label?
Uh, finish. Take until finish.
Take until? Gone.
Gone, dude.
Yeah, take until gone or take until, say, seven days, what's directed, right? Why should you not stop? Cause most of the time, you'll feel better on day three and day four. And many people do that because they can buy without a prescription. They buy per piece. She's nodding. She just came back from Mexico. She knows how it rolls, okay? Just came, but you, you, you buy, like, I'll just buy twelve capsules. You can buy that. They'll cut it even from the blister pack. You have to do that in the Philippines too, okay? But not so much now, okay? So you have to buy the full prescription and the patient should not stop taking it on day three and four when you start feeling better. That's normal. You're gonna feel better on day three and day four. But what do patients do? They contribute to bacteria being resistant, okay? That's why we have superbugs. And that's why the bacteria are harder to kill. That's why pharmaceutical companies kept developing stronger antibiotics. Okay, that's why we have what? Five generations now. That was in pharmacy school that were only four. So what should pharmacists tell the patient that shows up on the PTCE? Take until gone would be an auxiliary label. That's one, okay? Finish the entire duration of treatment or the regimen of the antibiotic. I had students back in the day, cause I always say, this is what happens when you take antibiotic, then you stop on day three, day four, because you feel better. Your bacteria go to the gym, workout, come back stronger and in mutated form. So they told me, Ms. L, every time my pharmacist counsels about antibiotic, I picture your bacteria like doing like this flexing. Yeah, they come back in mutated form. That's why they're superbugs. So the next time they take that antibiotic, hmm, I've had this before. It tastes good. Cause we made them resistant. We are the culprit. And it's not just Americans. It's the whole world, yeah? So we are the culprit for this superbugs. But we don't want to, this bacteria to develop resistance, which will show up on the PTCE. Bacterial resistance. What else?
What are DR capsules?
What was that?
What are DR capsules?
What are DR capsules? Delayed release. All right, good job. Good question. DR, delayed release. SR, sustained release. ER, extended release. Sometimes they do XR, extended release as well. Okay, sustained release, SA, sustained action, okay? Delayed release, sustained release, okay? All of your tablets or capsules that has this, specifically tablets, there's one rule. Do not. Crush, chew, or cut in half. But I had a student who's a med tech. She said, you know, the nurses at the nursing home, they cut extended release tablets. Why? It defeats the purpose, right? These tablets are coated so that what? It lasts long, okay? And there's another one that we're forgetting, which is included in this EC. What's EC? Enteric coated. Enteran means intestines, your stomach, right? So enteric coated, the tablet is coated so that it can pass through the gastrointestinal system in your stomach without getting destroyed by what acid?
Stomach acid.
Which is called hydrochloric acid, okay? Because this is the strongest acid. It's crazy, right? And it's in their stomach. That's why we have people who got hyperacidity and burn. Okay, so this helps with digestion. That's why it's there, okay? So there are tablets that are called enteric coated, where they're coated so that they can pass through the stomach, the intestines, without getting destroyed by the acid in the stomach. And they can reach the site of absorption or action without getting destroyed, okay? Also, one example would be your heparin. Heparin will never come in a tablet form because they're easily destroyed by stomach acids. And so what form do we have for heparin? Injectable in IV. What do you call this tablet that has a cut in the middle?
Scored.
Scored, correct. With the smallest we can cut, or we're supposed to. The smallest should be a quart because it's gonna be pulverized and powdered less than that, okay? For compliance purposes, what's the num, the max number of tablets or capsules we should be given to the patient so that they could continue to comply? Per dose. Max three. Cause they said if you do more than three, you'll stop taking the meds. So compliance is the problem. Why? That's a lot per dose. Yeah? Per dose. Max per dose. What if they have other prescriptions? This is just for one prescription. Max of three, smallest that we can cut it is a quart, okay? Maximum three. This has something to do with compliance. Why? What's the key to treatment? This one, compliance. Okay, no matter how many prescription a doctor writes, if the patient doesn't comply, I got no insurance, I got no money for copay. I have insurance, but no money for copay, okay? I'm stuck at home. There's nobody who will pick up the prescription. Is there treatment that will happen?
No.
So the, the key to treatment is compliance. So we wanna make it just like for kids. We wanna make it tasting good, yeah? For adults, we don't want to give them more than three tablets per pop, per dose. That's too much, right? See how all the seniors cut it. The competition is how big your bill boxes, I guess. Yeah, when I'm with my aunties, like, bringing out all these filled boxes. I said, we have a competition here. Who has the biggest bill box? Funny, right? Good question. Delayed release, SR. So anything that has those abbreviations tied to an oral tablet or capsule does not crush, chew, or cut in half or even a quart. Do not cut, right? Especially if it's an enteric coated one. What about SL? Sublingual tablet, okay? Did you know what sublingual meant before you started this program? And that's common. Sublingual means place where? Under the tongue. On the average, sublingual tablets take effect in twelve minutes. I told you the story about that, right? Not listening, not paying attention, okay? The patient swallowed it and was wondering why it's not taking effect, and the patient is cramping. Had he followed the instruction of placing it under the tongue, it would have taken effect in twelve minutes, right? Cause there's more veins under your tongue than having to go through, again, if you swallow a drug that's supposed to be sublingual, what's gonna happen? Effect is longer because of? Absorption, distribution metabolism, and excretion, right? What do you call this thing? Pharmacokinetics is what the? What the body does to the drug. Let's check. Does the body absorb the drug? Yes, which part? Take note. If you're from the night class, if you don't know this, you might wanna take note of this. Which, where is the absorption? Where does absorption happen with oral drugs? Most absorption happen where? In the small intestine. Where this distribution happened with oral drugs? In the bloodstream. Where this metabolism happened?
Kidneys.
In the liver. How did you forget? And where this excretion happened in the? Kidneys. Okay? This shows up on the PTCE, okay? Now, if drugs pass through the liver for metabolism, we call that, you remember? Letter F? No. When a drug passes the liver for metabolism, we call that? Very good. First pass effect or first pass metabolism. If it doesn't pass the liver for metabolism, it's called no first pass, right? So which are those drugs that doesn't pass the liver for metabolism? The ones that don't pass the stomach, right? So which ones are this? This shows up on the PTCE. What are the drugs that are not metabolized by the liver? These are your IV drugs. Cause they don't have to pass to your small intestines, to your stomach, to the liver for metabolism. IV drugs an example, why? Where this absorption and distribution happen right away? Straight to the bloodstream. Are you following? Bypass the, it's not only IV drugs. I am IV, right? All your injectables. Think about this. What about sublingual drugs? Does it have first pass or no first pass? No first pass, direct. What about dermatologicals? First pass, no first pass? No first pass. You didn't swallow it. No first pass. It's not gonna be metabolized by the liver. This is the favorite. This is the favorite. What about bucol? What bucol tablet? Between the cheeks and gum. Does it pass the liver or not?
No.
No, cause it dissolves right there, okay? So your dermatologicals will be in there, your bucol tablets, others call it bucol. Bucol tablet. Bucol is a tablet that's dissolved between the cheek and the gum. Suppositories, no first pass, okay? So with IV drugs, the absorption and the distribution happen directly in the bloodstream, correct? So a hundred percent available in the bloodstream. And that's what you call bioavailability. Bioavailability is the amount of drug that makes it to the systemic circulation. So if you take an oral tablet, acetaminophen, do you think, if it's five hundred milligrams, by the time it reaches the site of absorption, it's still five hundred milligrams? No, because it's gonna have to pass through this. You following? But if I inject an IV drug or solution to you, what will the bioavailability be? A hundred percent. Cause bioavailability, and can we win? Is the amount of drug that makes it to the systemic circulation. You following? Okay, so if there's pharmacokinetics, there's what we call pharmacodynamics. Dynamics, letter D, what the drug does to the body, okay? What the drug does to the body. I take an acetaminophen or a Tylenol because I'm running a fever. What will the drug do to my body? It will lower my fever, correct? Yeah? I take an Olo, a Tenolol, because I have elevated blood pressure. What will it do to my body? It'll lower my blood pressure. Pharmacodynamics. Give me examples of pharmacodynamics. Steve. Yes, example. I just gave two examples. What did you say? I just said Olo as an example, and I just said acetaminophen as an example. Oh, I love the focus. It's right here on the dot. The board. It's not sideways. What else? I just said Olos, and I just said, um, on top of the Olo, I mentioned acetaminophen. Give me an example. Yeah, that's just my example. What is it? Okay, give me one, Josh. Aspirin. What is an aspirin? It falls under what group? NSAID, no steroidal anti-inflammatory drug. If I take aspirin, what happens to me? Inflammation will go away. Aspirin can also be a maintenance for those who had a heart attack. Yes, okay. Give me an example. Rainy. Pharmacodynamics. So pharmacodynamics is what the drug does to the body. So what is its use, in other words, right? Give me a drug and think about its use, right? The Yazapam. What are your pam-pa-pam-pams and lam-la-la lam lam's? Benzo de Yazapins. What are they for? If I take that, what happens to me? Anxiety is reduced. Let me give you the term for that. This group of drugs that are used to manage your anxiety is called, or are called, Anziolitics. Take note, where did it come from? Anzo from anxiety. You remember Lysit? Lysit means to kill. Remember Lysol kills ninety-nine point nine. That's how they got the brand name Lysol. They said, if you create a brand and it's based off of a Greek or a Latin name, they'll make it big. Lysol is a big brand, okay? They got it from the word lysis, which means to kill. So anytime you see lysis at the end or lytic, it's to kill. So Anziolitics, what do you think this does? Kills anxiety. Is it, right? If you know medical terms. Anti-piratic. Anti is against. Piratic came from pyro, which means? Pyar, yeah? So when are you in fire? On fire? Be feverish, yeah? So it's used for fever. Anti-inflammatories for inflammation. Have we not have an ibuprofen side effects? Last week? Okay, let's do the DAW first. I know. Thank you Kathy for correcting me last Friday. Like I said, DUR, because it's always connected, the DAWs. The DUR stands for Drug Utilization Review. This can be a drug-to-drug interaction. This can be a drug to drug interaction, a drug to food interaction, a drug to disease interaction, a drug to age, drug to gender interaction. Sometimes it's as simple as you turned eighteen and your prescription still came from a pediatrician. That's a D U R. Why? You're not a minor, you're not a pediatric patient anymore. Can somebody erase the board? We'll do the D A Ws, that's your homework. How many D A Ws do you have? We have a zero, right? What's the most popular one? The pharmacist tape.
Oh, number two?
Is it two?
The doctor requested brandy?
No. You can't receive in the D A W once.
Well, cuz no, none of the substitutions are
Who requested the A W one? Okay, let's talk about this cuz this shows up. You've turned off screen. The A W zero. What's the A W? Dispense as written. So the doctor's saying, hey, you have to dispense this as I wrote it. What's the A W zero? No substitution, just says no substitution, right? But why do you think pharmacist hate the A W one?
Because it might not be covered by the insurance.
Okay, what does it say? What's the A W one? Substitute's not allowed by the doctor, by the prescriber. So this one is prescriber given. Right? We hate this because we're, these prescribers are not giving the patients a chance to get generic. Okay? Meaning the prescriber wanted us to give the brand. Yeah? Right? The reason why we don't want it is pretty obvious, there's red tape in here. Why? They're pushing a They're pushing a brand name, right? Especially if there's available. What if there's an available generic already, right? So we hate it. They're not giving the patients a chance to be on a generic. Saying What's the A W two? This one, patient requested. Okay? So this can be valid now. Why? I mean, they're all valid, but this one is frowned upon by pharmacists, right? Because we don't, we want the patient to be better. Yeah, we're not stirred by these pharmaceutical companies. So once they hear pharmacist, they hate us already. They think that we're stirred by anyway. A W two, patient requested it. So the patient may have tried the generic, okay? And had more side effects than the brand name. Okay? So the consideration is the patient must be willing to pay for that copay for that brand name. Okay? And here's what happens. In a drug, there's what we call the active ingredient and the inactive ingredient. Okay, say for example Tylenol. Brand name is Tylenol, generic is acetaminophen. For that tablet to be compacted, there'll be inactive ingredients like binders, fillers. Okay? So usually, a lot of the tablets, they use lactose as a filler. Okay? And what happens to those lactose intolerant if it's really, really bad? So most of the time, when patients are allergic to the generic, it's not the active ingredient that they're allergic to. They're allergic to the inactive ingredient, like the binders, the fillers. Are you following? Yeah, and I've seen this happen before. They say that they're allergic to the generic and the moment we tell them how much the copay is, they're not allergic anymore. Right? So is it really allergic or allergic to the copay? Right? So those are things that we need to consider. That's why we had a class back in pharmacy called, school called pharmacoeconomics. You have to understand the economics of the prescribe, prescribing process to, or the, take the compliance part. Okay, what's next? The A W? What's three? This is how I remember the one, two, three. Doctors are God. One. And then followed by patient and pharmacist are the bottom feeders. But that's how I remember. Okay, one, two, three. Pharmacist recommended, right? What's four? Generic is not in stock. Okay, generic not in stock. Generic not in stock. So they'll have to give the brand or an alternative. What's next after four? What number? Okay, what's five?
Brand dispensed as a generic, but substitution not allowed?
Brand is dispensed as a generic. Why? Because the brand usually doesn't have a generic equivalent. Read it again, Kathy. Brand dispensed as a generic. Substitution not allowed. Not by choice. Substitution. Substitution allowed. Brand is dispensed as a generic. Why? Back in the day when Nexium didn't have a generic Esomeprazole yet, they had to dispense Nexium, right? Because that's the only thing available, okay? When Kathy added substitution is allowed, there's no generic substitution. So they can substitute it with the same exact therapeutic class, not the same exact product or drug. What does that mean? So Nexium, brand name, generic Esomeprazole, but there's no Esomeprazole at that time available. So pharmacist will call and say, can you prescribe Lenzoprazole? You following? What's after five? There's a six?
Oh yeah, if this is an override code, you need to ensure
You just override it and then when you need a P A, that's the code that you use. Okay? You need to override cuz the insurance is not going through. That's not going through. So you build a primary card holder. Okay, what's next? Six. We don't usually use that. I'll tell you which ones we use a lot. Substitution is allowed. So they don't have to really write that, right? And what's eight? So that's eight. Brand names that don't have generics available yet. Generic not available. Level. Which means it's still under No, under patent. Under patent. So this one, it can be out of stock. That's why it's treated as a generic. This one, there's no generic available at all, okay? So this one, the brand can be treated as a generic and can be substituted with a same therapeutic class. Number eight, generic is really not available, okay? Not available in the market. Okay, which means that that particular product is still under patent. How long are patents good for? Most common one. Ones. One, two, three. Right, you gotta know the order. Prescriber is God. Patient and then the bottom feeder. Okay, one, two, three. Four is common and then eight. Tylenol versus ibuprofen? Unless you have something more pressing. Does this always shows up? The Tylenol and ibuprofen? Tylenol's a brand or a generic? Good. Wrong notion for Tylenol. Okay? People got sore muscle stings like Tylenol. But they have a headache and they have fever and they take aspirin. Old people, I got a headache. I'll take an aspirin. I'm running a fever, I'll take an aspirin. Okay? Tylenol's primary function is an antipyretic, which means if you have a fever, this should be your driver choice, not aspirin. Not ibuprofen. Okay, following? Okay. With a secondary function of pain, what's that term?
Analgesic.
Very good. Analgesic. Right? This is the reason why acetaminophen is always in combination with your opioids. Because it increases the pain factor. Pain maintenance, pain management, okay? And what's the last to almost nothing? It's not that effective in, as an anti-inflammatory. Following? Number one side effect of acetaminophen is? Liver damage or liver problems. Always shows up on the PTCE. Now let's do Motrin. The Motrin, a brand or a generic? Brand, generic? Ibuprofen. What class? NSAID stands for? Non-steroidal anti-inflammatory drugs. One fact, the number one NSAID is? Aspirin, not Motrin, okay? Acetyl salicylic acid. Aspirin is also an NSAID. So the next couple of information I'm gonna talk about is NSAIDs in general. What about naproxen? NSAID as well. Your Advil, NSAID as well, right? Are you following? Yes? Okay. So your NSAIDs will have a primary function of? What do you think the secondary function of your NSAID? What do you think it has very little of? It's not as effective as a fever reducer. However, this are a couple of things. Share this with your family members. Okay? But before I do that, what's a side effect of NSAIDs? Gastric irritation to gastric bleeding. So when you see cases on your PTCE and the side effect has something to do with patient complaining of gastric irritation or bleeding, find the culprit. The culprit will be one NSAID. One of those options should be an NSAID. Are you following? Okay. When you're managing fever of kids, this is what I do. Since Tylenol lasts four to six hours, no more than five doses a day, I give my son Tylenol first. He's not allergic. I'm allergic to NSAID. So even in my worst days, I can only take Tylenol. Ms. McGuinness is the opposite. She's allergic to Tylenol. So we can't share meds when we're both struggling, okay? For Motrin or ibuprofen, it lasts six to eight hours. Okay? So for me to have a better reducing power, a reducing power, um, antipyretic effect, this is what I do to my son when he used to run fever. I give him a Tylenol, acetaminophen. On the fifth hour, which is the middle of four and six, I'm gonna give him ibuprofen around the clock to lower the fever. And then between this, I'm gonna give him back two, back a Tylenol. And then you do that in between. Okay, why? It overlaps and it's so fast at reducing fever. It's a trick, okay? But you cannot give both. There has to be a one to two hours gap between Tylenol and ibuprofen. Are you following? That's when Tylenol becomes effective at reducing fever when you combine it, like not combined, but around the clock, alternating. A T C stands for? So if a prescription says Q twelve H every twelve hours. So if you decided to take your first dose at seven AM, your next dose must be seven PM. If it's two times a day is the prescription, how is that different? It's not specific, seven AM, seven PM. It can be two times in a day of your waking hour. It can be in the morning and at night before bed, okay? But be mindful of drugs that must be taken with food. Take with food, not take with food. Best taken on a, on a, on an average, most drugs are best absorbed on an empty stomach. Okay? But knowing that NSAIDs has a side effect of gastric irritation or bleeding, what are you gonna do as a patient? Eat first to lessen that. You following? There are also drugs that must be given with milk or better given with milk and should not be given with milk. Okay? Homework, next session Friday. What are the drugs that are best taken with milk? And what are examples of drugs that should not be taken with milk? Another thing, what are the drugs that should be taken with food? And what are drugs that are best taken on an empty stomach? Empty stomach doesn't mean hungry. Okay? It means that what? It can be five hours after you eat because they said digestion happens in three, two, five hours or two to four hours, okay? First thing in the morning. But if you didn't eat dinner last night, is that considered um, an empty or a hungry stomach? I think that would be hungry now, right? But if you had dinner last night and you woke up in the morning, that's still considered empty stomach. Okay? Why is it better, like for most drugs, to be taken on an empty stomach? Better absorption. It doesn't fight with surface area with food. Okay? Absorption is faster and better. Good job, okay? So what are the drugs that should not be given with milk? What are the drugs that should be given with milk or better taken with milk? Okay, there's another thing. There's a group of drugs or there are drugs that should, that should not be taken with, they'll term it as colas or sodas. In other words, carbonated drinks. That shows up too, okay? Find those drugs, we're gonna discuss them on Friday. What are these drugs that should not be taken with? They'll either use the term colas, sodas or carbonated drinks. Go through the term, okay? There's also some drugs that should be taken or best taken with orange juice or juice. Okay? Orange juice or juice. And another one, last one, what are the drugs that should not be given to pregnant? Think we've been very productive. Keep writing. You, you have your third batch of twenty-five decks cuz I'm holding off on giving you a practice test. I want you to see all of the questions on medications when you're ready. Okay? When you're ready. Because it's not, I mean, I don't want you to feel bad that you didn't know this, but when you make mistakes, that's when you learn. Your hydrochloroquine, you were guessing. Because of the quin, quin alone, but they're not related. Just like ni-statin. It's not a statin. Yeah? Good, good catch. It's not a statin, yeah, good, good catch, so keep taking notes. Who's done with all the check-offs, checkpoints, okay? So, okay, do checkpoints, and then I'll open that log, so you guys join later, the first quiz and practice, I'll open it for another date. So that they can catch up. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome, see, came to work for this. So if I'm so committed like this, you have no reason to not be committed, okay? Okay, for you, thank you guys for raising the board.